Ubusutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Impact on our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Mr. Chaffin, do you have anything to report out of closed session this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have reportable action on item C and item D. That was a notice of insufficiency for both of those claims. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a few agenda modifications this evening. Item nine, which is the introduction of an ordinance updating the city's procedures for filing claims against the city, will include a public hearing. And then item 10 for Merrymet Village Apartments Home Key Grant Funding will be heard immediately following Agenda Item Seven, which is the Merrymet Village Apartments Development Plan 2502, as these items are both part of the same project. Likewise, we will be removing from Consent Calendar item five, and we will handle that as a business item. Is there any other agenda modifications from the council? Okay, hearing none. We are going to move on to our first item, which is the 2025 Sick Parade Status Update from our police chief, Jim Runyon. Chief, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just going to go over really quickly kind of where we're at with the planning process of the parade, and any questions I can field for you on this issue. So parade currently is planned for November 2nd, 2025. Last year we met, or excuse me, we met in January of '25 and went over an after-action for the previous parade improvements, things like that, things that we saw that could be improved for the following year. Then the initial planning process for this parade takes place once a month and it started in February. So we meet monthly with all the stakeholders, the county, OES. We do have a representative from the temple there at these meetings, as well as our FBI partners, and the Ubusutter Transit is participating in these meetings as well. So everyone that's involved in the planning process meets on a monthly basis and just goes over the items that we need to get, work on to get the next parade off and running. So I'll just talk real briefly on things that we talked about that could be improvements for this upcoming year. We made contact with some company that provides barricades. They're permanent, excuse me, they are mobile barricades, but they provide safety to close roads, to prevent vehicles from entering, or even at high rates of speed. So we were able to work with that company. They actually rent these devices out for parades. So our staff has worked quite a bit to identify roads that we can block off the day of the parade that would prevent vehicles from getting into the parade route. So it's a huge, huge safety upgrade that we came across that we're going to implement this year. Continue measures, the Pepperwood Quail Point area, we're going to keep that neighborhood locked down. This will be the second year of doing that. That's on the Friday and Saturday nights in particular, which will help keep those neighborhoods free from extra traffic on those evenings. Along with that, though, there's some traffic-related issues we've had to work with the county on to try to, particularly at the end of the events, getting traffic away from the temple. Those roads are, they're only two-lane roads and it's difficult to get that many people in and out. The other thing we looked at is over at River Valley High School, it's always a parking issue. The parking lots are not big enough. They utilize a field south of the high school. It's a little confusing, if you will, as to where that is for paradegoers. So we, there's a vacant field right across from the high school that we contacted the owners, who are willing to work with the temple as far as renting that field for use the day of the parade. We provided that information to the temple as an option. So moving into 2025, the concerns we had, we knew that Ubusutter Transit was going to no longer be able to provide the bus service, which is a huge issue. We know that there's roughly, give or take, I'd say probably more than 30,000 people that ride that bus on that Sunday from the high school over to the temple that day. So that's been something the temple was notified of and told well over a year in advance that that service would not be available this year. So what we've told them is they need to come up with a bus company or a plan to get all those people over to the temple. In addition to that, we had to come up with a new bus route, and due to the new businesses on the northwest corner of Hard earned 20, last year they were not open, this year they are. So we can't just, we can't continue to utilize that route and shut that road down. Those businesses need to have access for their customers. So that's a new challenge we're going to deal with this year, and we're hoping it works out, but we just have to give it a shot and see what that looks like. And I already kind of mentioned assisting Sutter County with traffic leaving the temple on Friday, Saturday nights. We've got a plan for that to help alleviate that pressure that's putting on the roads up there. So this is, these are the big items for the police department and the county with this event. The traffic control company in the past, we've used TMI. I should say, the temple has contracted with TMI in the past, and they know the parade, they know what they need to do. Our staff has worked with them quite a bit over the past few months, providing all the information, any changes that were needed to be made this year, as well as we were able to get them to subcontract with that barricade company I had mentioned, which kind of makes it nice to where TMI incorporates that within their plan and provides all that information to the temple. That quote was provided last week to the temple. It took a little while to get the final quote done, but the work's been in place. But I would stress that that's something we initiated to get things moving with TMI, because we hadn't been told a traffic company to work with other than what we use in the past. The bus company, as of, I met with the temple last Thursday, there has been no bus company identified. They said they've talked to someone in Sacramento. I do not know that vendor's name. And they were going to attempt to talk to Ubusutter Transit, is what I was told again. So that's a major concern of ours. We have to find a way to get those amount of people from River Valley High School to the temple. I can't stress that enough. We can't have that many pedestrians crossing Highway 20 on a Sunday afternoon. Security company, a lot of that applies to what's the additional security they have on the temple grounds, which is the county's jurisdiction. But in addition to that, they help out with the parking lots that are within our jurisdiction and some of the road closures that take actual staff. So we worked with the same company they used last year, Black Line Private Security, and told them any additional needs we had. And that contract was also, or quote, I should say, for a contract, was delivered to the temple as well. But as of now, we have nothing signed with that company. And I mentioned the new parking lot or field that we're looking at trying to utilize. We provided that information to the temple. It's not something we're going to get into as to how they work out an agreement, but we just provided that information as an improvement for the next year. So those are major items that as of now, we don't have any of them completed. The parade permit itself has been initiated on the city's website, but it's going to be pending those items that we need from the temple. The proof of insurance cannot be issued until 30 days prior, so that's something that we know. It's just an industry standard, so we'll wait for that. And I also told them we needed some additional sight maps of the temple that really apply to the fire department for some of the stuff they have to deal with that day. But again, I would, I tell you, I met with them last Thursday and have laid out all these concerns that we need these things in place if this is going to proceed. So that's where it lies. I'll be contacting them this week to see any progress on those, but working with the companies that we've have in the past, all the information's been provided. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Yes, Chief, thank you for that presentation. Regarding the parking specifically at River Valley High School, I was told, I don't know where I picked this up from, that that parking would not be available this year. I know it over at AK, they recently closed the parking lot and put up a solar array in the parking lot. And I heard possibly that River Valley would be doing something similar to that during this time period. Is that correct?
You are correct. I apologize. I failed to mention that in there. We don't know the exact date, but it could run over that parade. If that field were utilized that I'm speaking of, in addition to the field they have access to, we'd have enough parking. So we could work around that issue. But you're correct, that parking lot may not be available. We probably won't know till a couple of weeks before the event what the status is there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Through the mayor. I've sat on this council now for three years, and the reoccurring theme of this parade continues to keep giving. How long's this thing been going on? Forty-five years? Something like that?
Thirty-five or forty.
And the powers that be apparently can't get their act together. And that's real concerning to me for this community and the safety of it. I'm all for cultural events, don't get me wrong. But when you've been told that I know of three years in a row now, and we keep getting stalemated, and I have great concern for that, for our community in the future.
Right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you through the mayor. First and foremost, this is a culturally significant event, and it is something that the city of Yuba City has and wants to continue to support. But I would echo Councilmember Puskwal's concerns. You know, we, as a city, have a charge of providing for the safety of our community. And when you have some of the issues that have happened in the past, and you look at world events and you concern yourself with things that could happen in the future, you know, I am alarmed that we cannot seem to convince the leadership of the temple that some of the things that we are requesting slash requiring are simply for the safety of not only the participants of the event. I'm not going to call it a parade anymore because it's a three-day event. And, you know, we, we have a certain amount of responsibility to the citizens of Yuba City to make sure that, that we're providing as safe a situation as possible. Chief, thank you for the efforts in the past about, you know, keeping the neighborhood less impacted up there in northwest Yuba City. I think, you know, those efforts don't go unnoticed at all. The challenge for the city of Yuba City is that the temple itself is not within the city limits. And therefore, when we talk about requiring certain things, we really have no jurisdiction. So we have to work with our partners at the county for that. We do have some fire and life safety issues up there. But as the, as the movement of people, parade if you want to call it, comes into the city, they're on Butte House Road, we do have absolute responsibility. And the things that we are requiring are what I would consider, to use layman's terms, are industry standard safety measures, traffic control, barriers to separate vehicles from, from foot traffic, vendor safety, et cetera, et cetera. What's complicating things this year, and I completely understand Ubusutter Transit's reasoning for the lack of bus service, they place their whole system at jeopardy if they continue to offer bus transportation services in a manner that they've done it in the past. So now we have this event, we have all those kinds of risks that we've had in the past, and we're going to add another layer this year, which is the inability for the movement of individuals via bus to and from the temple grounds. And frankly, you know, it seems like as we get closer and closer to the event, we're still not getting any, any headway in that regard. So, you know, I'm hoping, I guess this is a plea to temple leadership, if you're watching this, please just work with us. We're not, we're not asking for anything that's not in the best interest of the people that live here in Yuba City and the people that come to visit the temple for this great cultural event that happens each year. And that's, I'll leave my comments right there.
Through the mayor.
Do you have anything?
Something very quickly. I spoke with Chief Alexander quite a bit about this topic before he left, and you could see in his eyes that he took this dark cloud home with him every single night of the year. And I think it's also our responsibility, temple's responsibility, to make sure that fire and police personnel don't have to be up at night thinking about this event. So let's leave it at that.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say a few, a few more items, if that's okay. As, as the current chair of Ubusutter Transit, this was brought, at least the, the transportation component of this was brought before the board back in March of this year. And this isn't, this isn't a don't want to, this is a can't do, right? Because this puts the organization's funding at risk. And so the board took serious consideration over this, and they chose to discontinue the service, okay? This wasn't just done off the cuff. This was thoughtfully done, and unfortunately, we got raked over the coals, at least in the media. The representative from their, their legal realm said, and I quote, that Ubusutter Transit turned its back on the Sikh community today. And I took that personal. That had nothing to do with turning their back on anybody. It was protecting the organization. But they were given a heads up, not only in March, it was prior to March, the previous mayor and vice mayor told these folks, hey, this is, there's a really good chance that this, this amenity is going to go away. And so I'm a little bit disheartened by the fact that here we are, here we are, and, and the event gets larger every year, which is a good and bad thing. But to the vice mayor's point, work with us. Just work with us and see how we can get this thing done legally and safely on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Just following up on that, the leadership was notified May of 2024. That last year would probably be their last year that Transit would be able to do that because we've got the executive director here tonight, and I spent six years on Transit myself and chaired it a couple of times. It's, we're jeopardizing the funding for Transit for a few hundred thousand people in our hub area, 365 days a year, for one to two days of 100,000 or 200,000 people to have it, you know, 30,000 ride it. And it's not a trade-off that we can do. So, you know, it is what it is. Myself and former mayor Harris had multiple breakfasts and meetings with temple leadership, including their, our temple president, and was told straight up, you have to start looking at different options. And we even went so far as giving them different options and trying to do different things to make them think outside of the box last year, or at least prep them for this year, even reaching out to the local school districts and things of that nature, if that was even an option. And, and going further, and I know that Matthew, you've even helped and gone so far as to give them contacts and stuff. So thank you for doing that. You know, it really gets back to, and Chief, I'm going to head your way here now, it really gets back to, we keep ending up in the same place every year. And the one thing that keeps changing on our part that the vice mayor brought up is, the world is changing. And all you have to do is look, even if you have to go back the last year at the world events that's just happened, you can go back the last few weeks with things that's happened. And while this is a cultural event, it's a great event, it's not going to be the leadership that's putting it on that's going to screw it up. It's going to be someone coming from the outside that's going to screw it up. And ultimately, we have, as the vice mayor said, and as you know all, all well, we have the, the responsibility of protecting our residents and those who come to our city for the, for the, for the festival. So just kind of want to lay out the timelines here. We should be having the permit come before us just in a few weeks, because it has to be technically, it's supposed to be approved 30 days prior to the event. So that'd put us first meeting of October, correct, Chief?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, everything that you've gone through, I know we've met, you've met with myself and the vice mayor. I mean, you've gone above and beyond you and your team putting all this together. And it's paramount, the way that you guys have really thought about the, the safety of our residents and our guests, because it's, it's about evacuation, it's about EMT access, police access, keeping the neighborhood safe. Because our residents, I know Mark out in District Two there, the reason we keep that neighborhood kind of secured is multiple things, because people get tired of people parking along the street and in their yards, and they weren't authorized. And this starts this year, Chief, if I remember correctly, on Halloween, correct? So the kids are going to be trick-or-treating while a few hundred thousand people are going to be coming to town. So that's what makes this year even more, if you want to call it serious than, than anything. So, you know, back to where we started. Chief, first of all, thank you to you and your team, and Chief Hubbard, I know you're in here, you guys have been working diligently on this, trying to figure this out. Really, it's a plea to temple management or leadership tonight. This is nothing new. It's been going on for about 40 years, and it's a successful event. It keeps growing. We need the temple leadership to come to the table and get these things checked off, because you can't be handed a traffic plan and everything else five days before it's going to, you know, happen and be successful, correct, Chief?
Correct.
Realistically, about how much lead time for your team to be successful in protecting us do you guys need?
And in a perfect world, we would like these things in place, you know, around summertime for such a large-scale event. But it's, yeah, it's getting down to the wire where we need, we're sending mailers out next month, and this event's going to happen. These things need to be in place. So the ball's rolling.
So I just, I go back to what you've heard us, I think, all say here. Chief, whatever you need from the council, we're here to support you, and Chief Hubbard, both your teams. And this is really a plea for temple leadership. Please get, get everything together and get it done so that we can keep our community safe, because we don't want an event to happen here that we've seen happen all around the world and just right here in the United States alone in just the past few weeks. So are there any other questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. Chief, if there's anything you need from us, please let us know. We're here to help. And I think the vice mayor and myself will be delivering that plea to the, the temple leadership that, please get it done, and, and, and so we can have a successful and safe event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, Public Communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar, business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdictions, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered as time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests these 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We had no written requests, so do we have any public comments tonight for anything that's not on the agenda? Any public comment? Kurt, would you quit calling her? All right. So, all right, then, hearing done, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed on Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion for these items prior to the time that the council votes. In the motion list, members of the city council request specific items be discussed, removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. And again, we will be taking five separate. So do we have any public comments on Consent Calendars Three and Four? Any public comment on Consent Calendar Items Three and Four? Back to the council, do we have any comments or action on Consent Calendar Three and Four?
Move through the mayor, move to take action on Items Three and Four on the Consent Calendar.
Second. First, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to go into business items, which the first business item will now be Business Item Five, is the Agreement for Purchase and Sell of Real Property at 433 Plumas Boulevard. Yeah, but you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Pulling up the presentation real quick, this will be super brief. But Item Five before you tonight is an agreement for sale of surplus property at 433 Plumas Boulevard. For those of you that don't know that address, it's actually the northeast corner of Plumas and Franklin. See if I can highlight that. So it's this big property right here. The property is currently owned by the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city. So tonight, you're acting as the chairperson and the board of directors of that successor agency. The property is about two and a half acres. It's currently vacant. The state housing and community development department confirmed that the city has complied with the Surplus Land Act. That means specifically that we did not get any housing or development offers on the property for a period of 90 days, I believe. Back in March, the city had the property appraised, with the appraised value coming in at $645,000. And Sutter Medical Foundation has expressed a desire to purchase the property. So at council's direction, we've been working with Sutter Medical Foundation to come to terms on an agreement for the sale of the property. And I've highlighted a few key terms of that agreement. Shannon's team and the legal counsel for Sutter have worked really hard to get this agreement together in pretty short notice. So I feel like it meets everybody's best interest, but the key terms are that Sutter agrees to purchase the property as is. They'll pay the full appraised value, and they're agreeing to construct a medical facility that will serve our community. They'll agree to start construction within four years, and that might sound like a long time, but for a medical facility to put the plans together, get all the permitting approved, put it out to bid, and actually get a contractor on board, that's a pretty safe timeframe. There is a repurchase option for the city in the event that Sutter does not meet its obligations under the terms of the agreement, and then the terms will run with the land. So with that, I'm open to any questions, or we also have Steve Johns, a senior director with Sutter here, to provide more information.
Thank you. Steve, would you like to speak on behalf of Sutter this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Steve Johns. I'm the senior director of Government Affairs for Sutter Health. Happy to be here tonight. With me is Dr. Blair, who is our president of Southern Rough Medical Group, who oversees all the physicians that we have in the area. We're pleased to be able to continue to our commitment to provide care to the residents of the Yuba-Sutter area. The property purchased this before tonight will be laying the groundwork for a facility to provide cancer care services to this area. The property is very near our surgical hospital, and, and as well as our Sutter Advanced Care Center, which provides primary care, family medicine, pediatrics, specialty care, and lab services, and also Sutter Urgent Care. So this will be an additional service line that's critical for care for the community here and the surrounding areas. While plans are still in the early stages, we're very excited about the opportunity While plans are still in the early stages, we're very excited about the opportunity to expand in this direction. We look forward to sharing more details with you as we progress, as well as continuing to work with the city on this project. We'd like to thank your city manager, as well as Kevin Bradford, for their help in getting the agreement to where we are today. We also like to thank your planning staff, who've been wonderful to work with in some preliminary meetings to help us see where our vision can go. So we look forward to continuing to work with the city. And with that, thank you again for your support.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments from the public concerning this matter? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for questions or comments from here. Do we have any comments or questions? Steve, I just want to say thank you and Dr. Blair and the rest of the team at Sutter. Really, you know, this is just the next step of where we're going with this project. And it's hard to believe it all came together, basically, you know, sitting around on a napkin and talking about the needs we have for medical here, which I know we're going to be covering that here shortly with an ad hoc and stuff that we're going to talk about. But the land I grew up in has a lot of medical services. And California as a whole is just under medical care. I mean, it doesn't have the available resources. And just take a look at Sutter County and Yuba City, we need more and more medical around. So I want to say thank you for investing in us here in our community. And as you hit, this is going to be not transfer services, this is going to bring some new jobs and additional services. So this isn't just moving from one building to the next. This is going to be something completely new, correct, sir?
That's correct. It'll be new services for the area and it will keep cancer patients who are in this area from having to go to Roseville or South Carolina for treatment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So any other comments or questions from the council?
I'd just like to note that I'm looking forward to what you referred to as future things that are going to be happening. That was, brought, piqued my interest. And I understand that there's possibility of 150 new jobs because of this in the area, approximately?
It's early to say exactly what the number is, but there will be additional new jobs. And as you know, medical services are very labor intensive and they're very good jobs. And it's, so we look forward to also benefiting the area economically.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Then I will entertain a motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item five, agreement to purchase and sale of property, real property, 433 Plumas Boulevard. Do I need to read all of the APNs and such?
No.
Can just do a motion to approve if you so decide.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion? And I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Ayes have it. We're looking forward to expanding things down on Plumas Street. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, moving on to business item six, the 2024 CAPER. Shannon, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to also call this a CAPER, so we don't have to repeat all the words. So the item I have before you is for the 2024 CAPER. The CAPER's purpose, it's an annual report that's required of jurisdictions that receive annual community development block grant program funds, CDBG. As you all know, the city is an entitlement jurisdiction, so we do receive these funds each year. So every year, the CAPER tracks the city's progress towards those goals, the goals that we lay out each year in the annual action plan, as well as the five-year consolidated plan. Here's a reminder, just a refresher of what was funded and what was approved in the action plan during the 2024 year. I won't read through all of them, but this funding also included about 95,000 of previous year's unexpended funding. So during the program year, so July to June, we expended about $210,000, $10,000. An additional 85, around 85,000 was expended on previous year's activities. So the activities I just showed you in the previous slide are specific to the 2024 program. We still make progress on older activities as well. This number is, I'd like to point out, is a pretty good number this year. We didn't receive official approval from HUD until January. So in about six months, our subrecipients expended a lot of money during that time. Something else to note that since the program year ended in June, we have also spent additional funds. It just doesn't get reported during this CAPER. It'll get reported the following year. Another reminder, though, all these expenditures show continued progress towards our CDBG goals. So the utilization of the funds this year for housing rehab activities, 40 low-income senior and/or disabled households were helped with Freed's Home Repair Program. Big public service activities went on this year. So 744 people were helped through the homeless consortium. Over 443,000 pounds of food were recovered through the Food Bank's Food Recovery Program. 51 low-income youth received scholarships through Plazium's Play for All Initiative. And then six low-income couples received therapy through the New Day Training Center. The last two projects were completed during the program year. For public facilities improvements, about 60,000 was expended to construct a new ADA ramp for Casa de Esperanza. And then over 60,000 was expended towards the replacement of Patriot Park Playground. They still have a bit more to expend, and the last I checked, that should be finished fairly soon. We are required to do public outreach on the CAPER, so we solicit feedback during a 15-day public comment period that began on September 3rd. It will end on September 19th. It's one extra day. I'm aware it's not 15 days, but we like to give a little extra when we have the time. So this was noticed in the Appeal Democrat. It's available on the city's website, available at City Hall, available at the library. So far, we have not received any public comment. So the recommendation, conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the draft CAPER. And then after that consideration, approve, adopt a resolution approving the 2024 CAPER.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any questions from the council? All right. Hearing done. The public hearing on the 2024 CAPER is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments during this hearing? Do we have any public comments during this hearing? All right, hearing no comments on this issue. I am closing the public hearing and I'm bringing it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the 2024 CAPER and authorizing staff to submit all necessary documents to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
You have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving right along to agenda item seven, we have Merriman Village Apartments Development Plan 25-02. Mr. Libby, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, council, good evening. Thank you very much. Let's bring up the presentation. No, you're. Okay, Merriman Apartments Development Plan 2502. No, you're not seeing things. You have considered this project before in the past. And we're just, we had so much fun the first time, we thought we'd come back. Okay, so for consideration night, we're considering rescinding approval of Development Plan 2302. Determine the project is a home key project, consistent with the Health and Safety Code section up on the screen, and that it is a ministerial project. Determine that ministerial projects are not subject to CEQA, that's California Environmental Quality Act, and approve a new Development Plan 2502. Couple key facts, project 428 North Walton Avenue, about 7.7 acres in size, has a general plan designation of high-density residential with a density up to 36 dwelling units per acre. Does have a zoned R3, that's our apartment zoning, but it does have this X overlay zone on it, which I'll cover in more detail in a second. A little background. Our updated housing element was approved in May of 2022. Fast forward to 2023, there was a lot of action concerning Merriman, involved a community workshop held in these chambers, attended by city staff, Habitat for Humanity, and approximately 20 members of the public, followed up by a presentation to the city council on a concept for Merriman Apartments. City council authorized a joint application for home key funding with Habitat for Humanity Yuba Sutter. The city also authorized the mayor to submit a funding commitment letter for the city to contribute almost $1.8 million in development fee waivers and $155,000 annually of permanent local housing allocation funds. And then September of 2023, almost two years ago, your council approved Development Plan 2302. 2024 was quite a year receiving approval of the home key grant application and then being awarded $24.6 million in home key funding for Phase One of Merriman. It was August of this year that Habitat resubmitted a new development plan, requesting to rescind the development plan, approve a new one, making the determinations as I touched on. And our planning commission considered this in late August of last month and unanimously recommended approval to you. So an important distinction about this new application is that because it's utilizing a new health and safety code exemption that's in place, put in place by the legislature. The project would not be subject to environmental review and is considered ministerial. So when you hear that term ministerial, if you think of, if you have a vacant, single-family residential lot and you want to build a home on it, well, that action of building the home is considered ministerial. You can do that. You don't have to go through an environmental review process, similar now to this project. It also means, and it's important to understand, the city does not have discretion, unlike the previous application. However, the project hasn't changed. Still a 218-unit income-based affordable complex, 28 dwelling units per acre. That X29 overlay was actually an implementation measure from our new housing element that was approved by state housing and community development. It requires certain properties to be developed at a density of 20 dwelling units per acre. And so this project exceeds that requirement. Project, again, hasn't changed, but just to refresh everyone's memory, Phase One, Building Four, that's the property along Walton Avenue, 79 units. All site improvements will also be completed, including roadways, parking, curb gutter utilities, perimeter wall and trash enclosures. And Phase Two are the remaining buildings. This slide lists some height. I'll just touch on the R3 zoning height is, height limit's 48 feet. The tallest building is the one that would front on Walton Avenue, and that would be 46 feet in high, so it's compliant with the zoning. Here's what the project will look like. Several elevation renderings. You can see the different colors, different textures, all signs of good design, the inset windows. This project helps us implement a number of important general plan policies. It keeps the city in good stead with state HCD, which we try to, when we can. And also, every city and county has to comply with a regional housing needs assessment, a signed number for affordable housing. This helps get us a good way there, where we need to be. So conditions of approval, although this is coming forward as now a ministerial project, Habitat has agreed to comply with the original project conditions that were approved by your council in September 19th, 2023, with the exception of condition 12A. The reason for that is 12A is no longer applicable due to the new Health and Safety Code section that's being used. Again, environmental determination, this project wouldn't be subject to environmental review. Planning commission recommended certain findings, which are included in the resolution that is before you. Recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, make the findings and adopt a resolution of your council that would rescind Development Plan 2302. Determine Merriman project is a home key project pursuant to the Health and Safety Code section on the screen. Approve Development Plan 2502 as a ministerial project. I'm here to answer questions council may have. We do have representation tonight from Habitat, both here in the council chambers, as well as John Nicoletti is here virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Is there any questions from the council?
Do have a question. The sites that are not going to be built on, are they going to be buildable sites? Or are we going to have to tear up infrastructure to put those sites in to put buildings on?
Can you repeat? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The sites, the pads?
Yeah.
That are not being used, they will be build ready after this is completed, this first phase?
So I'll let Joseph with Habitat go into a little bit more detail, but the first phase is going to, the roads will be put in, the parking will be put in, the utilities will be put in, curb gutter. And yeah, the pads will be probably cut in, but nothing built on them until they receive subsequent funding.
So they will be buildable pads? That's my question.
Okay.
They're ready to go.
We will. I want Habitat to confirm, but as far as, you know, the initial Phase One improvements are going to get everything in place and shovel-ready for those subsequent buildings to be built.
Thank you. You need Mr. Hill to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Hill, can you address, are they going to be buildable pads shovel-ready for the future?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, so we actually are in the process of looking at some additional funding. We had a recent meeting with HCD and had gone over the new round of funding. And it looks like they, after today, they have enough available that we can apply to get the balance of funding to complete the project. So it was a pretty good news today that I wanted to share. But everything's going to be prepped to the site, and then once they're build ready, they'll have all their power, utilities, everything up to them, so they'll be ready to go.
Let me answer your question.
That would be the underground. My concern is that you're not tearing up more. Is there going to be the curb and gutter and parking and all of that ready to go?
So the first phase will actually, there's a map. I don't know if we have it as part of the slide, but it shows how far the first phase will go and what grounds it includes. And that'll be the front half, pretty much the front half of the property will be fully developed out as far as parking, curves and gutter. And then the rear half would be done in the second phase.
So my question, then, the answer would be no, it's not going to be ready. You'll have underground, but it will not be pad-ready, ready to build?
So no, so there won't be pads for all the other units until the second phase.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Public hearing for Merriman Village Apartments Development Plan 2502 is now open. If there are any members of the public who'd like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public during this hearing? Do we have any comments from the public during this hearing? Hearing no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve business item 7B as presented by staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, ayes have it, motion carries. We will move on then to agenda item 10, which is, we've changed the order, which is Merriman Village Apartments Home Key Grant Funding. Mr. Libby, you have the floor again, please.
Bear with us for a moment as we navigate our technical difficulties. Okay, so part two of tonight's items is dealing with the home key grant funding for Merriman. And so this tonight is to consider transferring the state-awarded home key grant funding that we have currently on account with U.S. Bank, a city account, including accrued int. that we have currently on account with US Bank, a city account, including accrued interest to Five Star Community Bank. You saw this slide from the last presentation about Merriment. We'll pass, move forward. So again, the total award was $24.6 million for the Home Key Funds as of August 31st last month. And we have $25.4 million, so the project has accrued about $828,000 of interest since we have received the grant funding. From what I understand from the Finance Director, it's currently earning a rate of 4.1%, I believe. So. So the proposal is Habitat's working to close the funding gap for the project. They have selected Five Star Community Bank as their preferred institution to work with. And as part of extending the line of credit to Habitat, Five Star is requesting the Home Key Grant Funding be transferred to their bank. And you can understand based on the fact that local community banks live and breathe by deposits on account. And so they've laid out a couple options. One is to transfer the money as far as a single transfer or divide it into two parts, 50% initially or 50% by December 5th. Now, as far as fiscal impact, well, it doesn't have any direct fiscal impact on the city because the funding at issue is state-awarded Home Key Grant Funding, it's not general fund dollars. The proposed line of credit for Habitat that they are securing is being based, secured by their existing assets and not the Home Key Grant Funds. Funding would only be able to be dispersed consistent with our existing recorded covenant and loan agreement between Habitat and the city. And if approved, Home Key Grant monies will be placed into an account at Five Star Community Bank that is in the city's name only. So the city would continue to control the grant funds. Alternatives, well, I think it's important that the council know that you're not required to transfer the, the grant funding to a different financial institution. That said, due to the monies continuing to be held in account that's in the city's name only, that can only be dispersed consistent with our existing covenant and loan agreement, staff is supportive of the request to transfer it as a single transfer. So the recommendation is to, for the city council to direct the city manager and finance director within 30 days to transfer the total amount of funding on account at US Bank, including interest to Five Star Community Bank, to account opened and solely controlled by the city and its officers, including the city council, city manager, director of finance, consistent with HCD and city policy. And two, and this one's, I think equally is important, city council stipulates the transfer of funds to Five Star Community Bank is contingent upon Habitat successfully securing gap funding for the Merriment Project with Five Star Community Bank. So with that said, that conclude my comments, and Habitat is here to answer any questions we may have.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Libby, thanks for the presentation. I'm assuming the same interest rate transfers from US Bank to Five Star Bank. I didn't, it may have been in the staff report, and if it was, I apologize for not catching it.
Well, I was still trying to gather what that specific rate is, so 4.1 now. We would earn the, what they call the LAIF rate, Local Agency Investment Fund, and that rate currently is actually a little bit higher right now at 4.4%. But that's variable that will change depending upon how rates go.
And when you make the transfer. So 50% or all of it, you said those were options, and you're recommending the total amount?
Yes, we are recommending a single transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Right, then I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action on this.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
On Item 10, I should put my glasses on, be quiet over there. It's on me squinting. On Item 10, approve staff's recommendations on the item.
Second. Okay, I have a first and a second, and I just want to be clear based upon the last question you had there, Vice Mayor. It's staff recommendation of doing a single transfer.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, let's move forward and see if we can get this thing built.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Good evening.
Thank you. All right, Agenda Item Eight, Appointment of Healthcare Committee. Mr. Bindorf, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So this item is brought before you in reaction to an item that was previously approved by your council of appointing an ad hoc committee to work closely with Adventist and on healthcare issues facing the Yuba City area, but also Yuba Sutter in total. And through those discussions, we, subsequent to those discussions, we did have a meeting with Adventist, the mayor, vice mayor, myself, to talk to Chris Champlin about the current status of different projects and issues with Adventist. I think as we discussed the continued work of an ad hoc committee that may be looking at a more holistic engagement with healthcare providers in the Yuba Sutter area, which there are several, that we would bring this back to the council, explore some more options, whether we take part in an existing healthcare council or we do form an, or form an ad hoc committee for specific interactions, engagement with maybe just Adventist or others is an option as well. So, but the recommendation is before you is to consider moving forward with a ad hoc committee or some alternative thereof, which could be involved in appointing a, which may involve appointing a member and maybe an alternate to an existing healthcare council, which has been in Yuba Sutter and functioning for quite a number of years now. So we would just, if that was an option that the council would consider, we would then seek the healthcare council's approval of being included in those discussions of which several local government agencies participate, as well as our public health officer, as well as Sutter, Adventist, and several of the others such as Amplah, Peach and other healthcare clinics.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just comments. This was raised in part at least by, by me several meetings ago. I felt like the city of Yuba City didn't really have a seat at the table when it came to current or any kind of events that were going on with the healthcare community. And that was based upon lots of input, questions, concerns raised from our constituents about, okay, what's going on with this? What's, what's going, what is the status of this? Why don't we have a hospital in this county and a hundred other different things that people brought up? And it quickly came to me, is we really don't have a seat at the table. You know, we, we aren't a part of what Mr. Bindorf talks about as this healthcare committee. We rely on presentations, and we are thankful that when we get them from the various healthcare providers. But as Mr. Bindorf pointed out, there are numerous ones of those. I think it's a great idea to place a representative on an existing committee and seeing what kind of information can be gleaned from that. But I guess I'm looking for, especially after meeting with Mr. Champlin, and I appreciate him spending the time with us, but that was at our request. And I, I think at some point here in the not-too-distant future, I'm interested in, and I've had this conversation with our mayor, and I'm bringing it up here in public now, is the opportunity for the city to sit down with the various providers altogether and say, okay, what's going on? You know, what are your challenges? What are the things that, that are impacting the ability or the inability to provide healthcare service to our community, to all segments of our community? It's no secret that it takes a lot to get an appointment here on many different specialities and/or regular things. And this just seems like as, as the largest local governmental body of 71,000, you know, we have, we have a responsibility to our citizens to better understand and advocate for, for, for healthcare services. And I'll bring up a comment that I've made in the past. You know, city local government is the one that is closest to the people. It is the one that people can reach out, and they do ask us questions. And it's, it's awkward not to have answers. And I don't like that feeling when someone asks me a question about, you know, what is, I mean, I'm not going to pick on anybody, Adventist, Sutter, Amplah, Peach, whomever. You know, what are, what are they doing? What, what's going on? And there's some really good things going on. We saw one of those tonight. But I just feel like as a representative of, of the people, we as a city council should not only have a seat at this other table, but I think we have a responsibility to drive, drive a little bit more into that and get more information as well so that we can report back out to our citizens. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Then, then I'll, I'll chime in with the Vice Mayor. You know, we, we did have the meeting with Chris Champlin, and we're very much on the same page with, with where we're, we're seeing this go. And I think you nailed it right, the nail on the head there. And that's the fact that we haven't had a seat at the table because the seat at the table is this other committee that's been going on that for whatever reason, we haven't been at the table. And a long time ago, if you're not sitting at the table, usually you're, you're on the menu. So, you know, it's, it's time that we get to that point. But the Vice Mayor and myself also talked, like he said, that it would be, it would be good if we could get on that committee and have a representative there. But then periodically going into this next year or the year after, maybe we as a city can also kind of do a hybrid approach and host our own healthcare summit with all of these entities coming together, not just that committee. But let's get Sutter and Adventist and Amplah and Peach and the tribe and everybody together and meeting with the leadership, meeting with our, our city council and our, our team here to talk about, you know, really what's going on that maybe is not flowing through that, that committee on the side. I think that's how we're going to be able to share our concerns that, that we've heard, but also do it in a very expedition, God, I can't talk. It's about three in the morning where I've been, so. Efficient manner, thank you. Yeah, I asked for help before we started this in case we got to that point, so I apologize. But do it in a manner that is efficient and productive because a lot of times we set these committees up and you have people come in and it just turns into a gripe session, complaint session. People just wanting to hear their voices heard, and I think our focus not, does not need to be in the rearview mirror, but it needs to be in the front mirror looking outward with where we're going because we all know whatever's happened in the past. And we just need to figure out how we can pull all those groups together. So, is there any other comments from the, the council? Then, what I would like to move then is amending the, the current healthcare ad hoc committee as it was established earlier to changing away from public and a couple of members on the council that we appoint, seek out and appoint a, a member and a alternate to be on this healthcare committee that you brought forward, Mr. Bindorf. And then I think the summits and stuff like that, as the Vice Mayor will be assuming the seat here in a few months. I mean, that's entirely your discretion, but I think that's something that we should do. We don't need a motion for that, but I think we do need to get a member on that, that committee. And that would be my motion. And I'll go there in a second. So, because I got to see if I even got a second to begin with, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. So is there any other discussion from the council? Is there any comments from the public now that I have something to talk about?
The only thing, if there are no comments from the public, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
We do, if we have a comment from the public, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. You raised your hand, correct? Yes, sir, right up to the podium up there.
Hi, Mayor Shaw. My name's Mr. Timothy Robert Nagel. My church was talking about making a Christian hospital. I don't know if there's anything between politics and religion. Just if I can make that comment, that's all I have for you, please.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Dr. Blair?
I'll be brief, but yeah, Dr. Blair, sort of north. You know, the, I think the city needs to be involved. I mean, you've probably heard this, and, you know, with the bill that passed this summer and a few other things that have happened, the northern part of California is going to undergo immense change. We, we're going to see hospitals closed, we're going to see services closed. You're going to see restriction of access. So I think it's only in the benefit of the community for the, actually, to have a place for everybody to come together and actually, so you guys understand what could be happening and what may not be happening. So, and we're happy to participate.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I want to close the public comment, and Mr. Bindorf?
Yeah, so the only thing I was going to offer, Mr. Mayor, was that I've attended a few of the healthcare council meetings in the past, and they have, usually have pretty good attendance. And they discuss a wide variety of issues, and I think it will be beneficial to our city council and also our constituents here, or your constituents. But I would also ask that if your council does vote in the affirmative to move forward, I can reach out to the healthcare council, find out what the next steps are, petitioning them to have a seat at the table and report back to your council and work with whoever you're appointing.
Perfect. We have a motion in a second. We've had a public comment.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
So sorry, just for my purposes of clarification, so the next steps are going to be reaching out to the health council. What about the ad hoc committee? Is it still going to be in existence? Or is the city council dissolving at that point?
We are amending that whole thing to go away from the, the motion was to do away from the ad hoc as it was done and go to a representative on this committee.
Perfect. And so my understanding is, is if we can get on the committee at that point, then we will point the primary and an alternate?
That would, yeah, that was about what I was to clarify because tonight, we don't need to, to do that because we need to make sure we can get a seat at the table first.
Roger, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, all on the same page? All right, then are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of amending our ad hoc to basically get rid of that and appoint someone to the healthcare committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Ayes have it, motion carries, and we will move forward. And Mr. Bindorf, if you'd let us know when, what we need to do or whatnot, could be great. Okay. Action item, or Agenda Item Nine, Adoption of an Ordinance Updating the City's Procedures for Filing Claims Against the City. Is that going to be you, Mr. Bindorf, or is it going to be Mr. Chaffin?
It's going to be me this time around.
Can you do that in your auctioneer voice?
You probably wouldn't want to hear it in my auctioneer voice. But I will try to be very succinct because it is already dark outside, and I'm sure everybody wants to head home. So by way of background, if someone is making a claim against the city or saying that they've been damaged, before they sue the city, they are required to submit a claim to the city outlining why they believe they've been damaged and the evidence and the proof for that. And that claim is required before you can commence a lawsuit. So, we have a claims process on the books for the city of Yuba City. Hasn't been updated in a couple decades or more. And as a result of that, it comes as no surprise, there have been some changes to the law in the last, you know, quarter century or so. And so this ordinance has been proposed to update the code, to bring it up to current standards. The intent is to be consistent with best practices from what we see in other jurisdictions. It allows for streamlining for both the city council's time and for staff and more efficient use of the city's resources, provides greater clarity and updates to the process, including for the public, so you have greater transparency. And it also provides flexibility and it has built-in checks and balances to the system as well. So what does this ordinance do? Well, first of all, it establishes procedures for the receipt and evaluation of claims. It clarifies the city clerk is going to receive those claims, how they're circulated to the risk management position, how they're evaluated, investigated and resolved. One of the big things about this ordinance, it is proposing authority to resolve and settle and otherwise resolve, get rid of claims or address claims or even reject claims. Under the process, the risk manager is proposed to be delegated authority up to $10,000 the risk manager is proposed to be delegated authority up to $10,000 to resolve claims, settle claims or reject claims with the concurrence of the city controller. So you see a pair there, risk manager, city controller. Those people are not the same people, by the way, under the ordinance. Then for the city manager, authority is being proposed at $25,000 for settlement authority with the concurrence of the city attorney. So that there's checks and balances in the system, make sure that you have two heads looking at this. So among others, technically, the city council does have authority to go up to $60,000. Some jurisdictions go up that high. Staff is currently proposing about the $25,000 mark and it allows the city to be more efficient. And why is efficiency important? And you often don't hear that in government, but the city has a clock that runs as soon as a claim is submitted to the city. And we have 45 days in order to get the claim, investigate the claim, process the claim, circulating it to the risk management or the insurance providers, make a recommendation, set it to city council meetings for a closed session or whatever it may be, get to council's direction, then provide notification of that claim and the action on the claim all within 45 days. So if there is a council member meeting that's canceled or national night out or something else, I can be kind of problematic to go through that process. So this allows efficiency for what I call the, you know, the, the pothole claims, the kind of the run of the mill, simple claims that can get in and out very, very quickly. There is one thing this ordinance doesn't do. It doesn't prohibit the city manager from bringing claims to the city council, even if they are less than $25,000. So even though it's within the city council's authority, there's nothing in here that prevents the city manager from saying, you know what, I'm going to return to the source of my authority because I think this particular claim warrants in a second look by the city council and input on it. So the recommendation from staff this evening is to introduce the ordinance from a city attorney perspective. As you know, I don't make policy recommendations, but this ordinance does meet the legal requirements for your risk management ordinance, and it is consistent with ordinances in other jurisdictions. I'm available for any questions.
Right. Is there any questions from the council this evening? Hearing none. Is there any public comment concerning this ordinance? Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for action on this. Oh, actually, never mind. Yeah, I got to do a whole public hearing.
Yeah, I just caught that.
Thank you. Hey, it's 3:14 right now on my clock in the morning. So, all right. The public hearing on the ordinance updating the city's procedures for filing claims against the city is now open. If there's many members of the public who would like to address the council's issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the records. Back to where I went a while ago. Is there any public comment concerning this ordinance? Any public comment concerning this ordinance? Hearing none. I'm closing the hearing on this issue and bringing it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Take action on item nine, adoption of the ordinance updating the city's procedure for filing claims against the city. Recommendation, introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City, repeating and adding sections three dash three point zero four of chapter three of title three of the municipal code regarding special claims procedures by the title only and waive the first reading.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Going to agenda item 11. Is there anything the council wants to have brought back at a future meeting? Hearing none, we're going to move right on to our city manager's report. Bindorf?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll only have one item for you tonight, and that is next Tuesday, we'll be meeting in the chat in a workshop setting to talk about some priority setting, governance, training, a few other things. It will be the city council as well as our executive team participating in those items, but looking forward to a good, robust workshop. And I can't wait to hear all the thoughts and ideas that come forward. That's all I had tonight.
Thank you, sir. Go to council reports. Councilman McCall?
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
This can be short and sweet. Councilman Kirchner?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome home.
Thank you.
So this month, Gil Sizer was canceled. I did attend a brief nine 11 ceremony at, oh, shoot. What's the station at Lincoln?
Station three.
Station three. Thank you, chief. I'll figure that out one of these days. But yeah, we, that's a, that's a, that's a big day. And it was a time constraint on my, on my part. I'd rather much go to the one, station one by the, by the library. But that's really a, I wish more, I wish more people would, would attend that. Of course, the big one this year was at the museum, correct? At, yeah. Okay. And I really wanted to attend that one as well. Regional Water Authority, we had a very lengthy meeting, looking at the directors. We've done the last year and we approved a 6.5 merit increase. Nothing else to report from Regional Water Authority. Mosquito Vector, similar, it was a executive director review. There has been some West Nile cases in the area, but nothing out of sorts from any previous year. And then lastly, I, I attended the League of Cities. Yuba City was the host last week. We, we started off over at Boyd Hall and council member Pasquale did an amazing job at giving kind of an update of what's, what's happening in Yuba City. And also our interim city manager, Robert Bindorf, who I never thought he'd actually spoken in front of a group of people before, but he seemed to do a pretty good job with that. And it was really nice to, to highlight what's, what's special, what's exciting about our town. We did a tour of Pluma Street. David Reed was, was gracious enough to give us a tour of the, the theater and, and show else what, what this area has to, to offer. And I believe that concludes my reports, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Pasquale?
Thank you, Mayor. DBA had a meeting I attended and they are sticking to their guns about charging everyone in their DBA Downtown Business Association for their dues. They were unanimous about that. I was kind of put on the spot by a member, but that's okay. We got it all clear, clarified. League of Cities, it weighed, Mr. Kirchner mentioned, went really well, I thought. I know after the meeting, several of the other council members in, in the area came up and spoke with Mr. Bindorf and myself and were very appreciative of how we laid things out, laid things out for them. And they had a pretty good, pretty good time with us. Had my GSEC meeting on the 11th, unfortunately, and I didn't get to participate in any of the nine 11 festivities. GSEC is alive and well. Their budget review was given to us and they've got $4.5 million in the bank. And all of their goals that they had set are either being met or exceeded. So, and I, I just want to say that being involved with that organization, I think, has definitely paid dividends to us because that is the first connection that Sutter made with us to come to our community with this current project that they brought. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, that this organization has been fruitful for us. And I hope it was even more so in the future. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Attended the Air Force Bowl at Hard Rock. Phenomenal event. If you ever get a chance to go, I heartily recommend it. It's a good way to support the airmen and others. The keynote speaker was four-star General Adrian Spain. He's the guy that's in charge of air combat command. And he definitely spoke in a very positive way about missions staying and coming to be at Air Force Base. So I think that was a good, a good message. Attended the nine 11 ceremony at Station One. That's, that's the place I've planted myself for probably 24 years now or 25 years. And I appreciate those at Station One, that place that put that ceremony on. Super meaningful for those of us who were around when nine 11 happened. Secog's Transportation Committee, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that because we have a meeting on Thursday to approve Transportation Committee recommendations, but there's more good news coming from, for Yuba City. Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. The highlight here was we had some credits left over from projects that we were able to actually transfer and get money for to the San Joaquin Area Flood Control Agency into hundreds of millions of dollars. This money comes back to, to us. Our ability to sell these credits places money back into Sabuca, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency for, for our projects, which is going to be good. LAFCO, we approved the FIRE Municipal Services Review. Mr. Libby, thank you for shepherding that project through. That was a long one, not because of Mr. Libby, but because of some, because he's there, it actually finally got done, actually. So, appreciate that. And at that meeting, we approved the consultant to do Live Oak City's Municipal Service Review. So that should be an interesting study for them up there to see how things are going. And I would like to, to mention that on October 7th, and I'm hoping the mayor will talk about his, his honorary commander, but we intend at this point anyway, just flag this to the, to the city council and anyone else who might want to attend, is that we're going to host Lieutenant Colonel Dom Foglia. He's my honorary, or he's my commander of the Ninth Intelligence Squadron and his staff. They'll come in early. We'll have a little meet and greet with the executive team. And then he'll actually present, you know, a short presentation at the council meeting in regards to the mission that the Ninth IS does out there, which I think you will find absolutely fascinating. These are the folks that take intelligence from satellites, the U2s and every other kind of stuff, process it and then send it back out. So it's one of two places in the world that do this for the US Air Force. So they're not going to be able to give you everything because it's kind of secret squirrel stuff, but they will give you a little bit. And I think you will find it fascinating. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, they can tell you, but then they have to kill you. That's usually how it works. And it was all the spy movies. You know, first of all, I just want to say thank you to our entire, entire city team. Every one of you are rock stars. As you've heard it alluded to, I left the United States on vacation. The, it was August and I've been back not even 24 hours. And everything just carries right on. And we work as a team and our city team works as a team and is comprised of nothing but rock stars. So to all of our team members, thank you. To my fellow, fellow colleagues setting up here, thank you. Because everybody picks up and everybody carries the ball. We had Lee here and Councilman Pasquale, thank you for taking care of that and, and running with that. And, you know, it's, it's a good team effort. So that's, that's the big home run there. As far as, yeah, we'll talk. It's one of the things I forgot to mention earlier when we were talking was that my commanders are not going to be available on the 7th, but we need to go ahead and move forward with yours. And when you get around military, you find out you got this one on TDY and this going on and that going on. So to get them together is an act of God almost sometimes. So we'll be holding seven Swiss in maybe mid month or a little bit later. But definitely let's get the Ninth IS one in here and, and bond up with, with the Ninth IS. You know, I really don't have anything to report because I've been out of country, but I will close with this. We have a great nation. And there's a lot of things that go on. And don't want to dive down into the political, are you on this side or that side or anything else. But I think we need to come back to a focus that our founding fathers started in this nation. And, you know, I was over in the land where we are, you know, well, we were considered the treasonous, you know, colonists that came over here because I was in the UK. But unsolicited and talking with people over there, just when they found out that I was an American, we have something uniquely special here. And if you go back to everything that, that we're taught, we are one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. That kind of sums it up right there. We need to get back to our roots of what this country was founded on. And there's been tragedies that's happened. And what's more tragic is what our country is, is kind of becoming because we're not a country of if we disagree, I'm going to hurt you. We can agree to disagree. We are again, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So it's good to be home in the States. Again, thank you to all the rock stars up here for, for carrying everything on. And let's continue getting back to our roots. And on that, do we have anything else? Anything? 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 We're good?
Other than we're thinking about changing the prefix for our area code here for city hall to six three O instead of five three O. Because that was the time that the vice mayor got us out of the council meeting while you were gone. And so I, not, I, I'm just looking at the current time and I just want to make sure I mention.
As the gentleman in the back pointed out, he was almost as quick as I was, but I still have the record, right, Tony? Thank you. All right. With that, let's all get out of here and go home. We stand adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.